Six o'clock, now call the meeting to order. If you will all rise for the pledge of allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'm pinch hitting for somebody today. You know, recently, we recognized Martin Luther King, and I saw a quote of his I thought I would share. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. So with that, Lord, I'd just like to thank you for all these public servants here, as well as all the employees in our city. I pray you give them wisdom and strength and protection, and we thank you for this day. Amen.
Thank you, Joe. Have roll call, please.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Melendez.
Here.
Councilman Boy.
Here.
Pro Tema Lally.
Here.
And Mayor, Mayor McCloud.
Here.
We have a warrant.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of January 25. Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any corrections?
To the chair, if we can make the corrections, Councilman Schleck was attended at the last meeting.
We have a correction showing Mr. Schleck as being in attendance and not excused at the last meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, those corrections will be made, and I will send them to you guys and show you before we sign them.
Thank you. We had a call from Representative Liberati's office, and he unfortunately will not be able to make it this evening, so we will move on to organizational business.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few items to give you an update on, but this past, last week, at the end of last week, we had some, a little bit of fun. And what started off as just to be a Facebook joke. The challenge came from the city of Woodhaven Police Department to our Allen Park Police Department, and we are not one to sit back and just not take on a challenge. And so the police department accepted the city of Woodhaven Police Department's challenge of a sled hill ride down the Civic Center Park there in Woodhaven. And the winner would get a, I think they were going to do it for a lunch or something. I think it was Birkenstein, or Burke, one of the restaurants in Woodhaven, and then Taylor was going to provide a lunch. That thing blew up. In a short period of time, agencies were being called out by other agencies, and ultimately, there was a total of nineteen agencies involved at the sled hill last Thursday. Also starting from that was a challenge by, I don't know if it was the mayor or one of the photographers, but that was a challenge to raise money, and ultimately, over $10,000 was raised from this one single event. And again, it started off as a Facebook joke. It just blew up, which I like when they blow up like this. So the, over $10,000 was donated to the Pinkerton Center for the Blind Children and the Downriver for Veterans organizations. And there was a nice trophy presented to the city of Woodhaven for winning. I, as a judge, I now question some things though, because I did see some silicone oil pictures being floated around. I'm going to get back with Mayor Woolley, and we're going to have to look at this. But we got to put some rules in place next year as well, because there was a lot of head start running and diving halfway down the hill.
Officer Basile claimed that his sled was stolen and was tampered with. I hate that mention from today.
Well, you can't, those Woodhaven people, I don't know about sometimes. But what a great event. It really was nice to see everybody there and the support that was going on throughout the Downriver area. I think that others are now looking to make more challenges. I think soon thereafter, Dearborn Police offered a challenge for their charities for Ford Field. I still think the hill would be a great location. I think I'd either move it into the Louge or Skeleton. And if you can make it down there, and I wouldn't even stop traffic on auto drive. If you can make it across, kind of like Clark Griswold, you're in. But what a great event. And as a side note there, I put on there, in your notes, the person that challenged this, made this challenge is a, I believe he's an Allen Park resident, but he works for the city of Woodhaven Police Department. Officer Ron Weiss, I think he might be a sergeant, or I think he's a sergeant. And he was in Florida while this was going on. So he wasn't even here, so. But it's just a great event, and good to see everybody. I was happy everybody came back down the hill safely. I think that maybe next year, they may look at some, you know, funny rides or costumes. I think we had, somebody from Taylor was dressed up, and I think it was the officer from Dearborn may have decided to go down in the kiddie pool. That did not work out very well. And city of Southgate, I don't know what they did over there, but their sled disintegrated halfway down the hill. But Officer Basile, I believe he would have been second, third place, I think he was third place in that. I did everything I could, but they had photographic evidence, and the fingertips won it, I guess, so. More news there, the Parks and Recreation Junior Pistons Basketball Program started this past Saturday, and it'll continue for another five weeks. If you're looking to check out the next Kate Cunningham, there might be the opportunity at the gymnasium there at the Civic Center. Also part of the Parks and Recreation Program, just thinking ahead for summer, they'll be starting their six-week program June 20th, and that'll be, I think that information is on their website, and we'll make sure we get it out as well. And ours, great program, I know a lot of kids had a lot of fun last year, and hopefully, you'll take advantage of that again. I had a lot of help with the department heads over the last few weeks gathering information. I was able to put together five grant applications for the Community Development Block Grant Program, the CDBG program, for a program year 22 applications. We put together a public services application for $20,000. That's the max you can request on that allocation. That was for senior bus transportation and additional office hours. That is a non-competitive grant. That's one where we are guaranteed $20,000 per year, and that was our application for that. For the competitive grants, ADA park improvements was for $1,210,000. That would be installation of the ADA compliant interlocking rubber tile surface to the play structure and swing set safety zones. That would be for Champagne Park, Millward Rotary Park, Pretty Family Park, Sudman Park, John Reel Memorial Park, and Thomas Bran Memorial Park. The way we put that together is that if the funding is not for 1.2, if they have three, $600,000 available, we'll take it. It's scalable, we can make it work. So each one of those parks was listed as an individual and cumulative for the $2.1, or $2.1.2 million project. You'll notice later on, we do have an application that Pat had submitted to MDNR. We also submitted a similar project for Cunningham Park ADA improvements for $842,000. That would also include the installation of a new ADA play structure, 6,000-square-foot safety zone. And also, you can use those interlocking tiles, they're the GT impacts, and they are, I think they look really sharp. The maintenance is a lot less, to almost nothing, and you really do resolve your weed issue and anything else. But from a safety point, if the kids are going down the swing, are using the swing set, they're kicking their feet, all of a sudden, you notice that mulch is gone, and it's back down to dirt. If they fall, there's nothing there to save them. At least with the tiles, you still have three and a half inches, which doesn't seem like a whole lot, and you're hitting the rubber, but it's still better than hitting the ground. It will give, and that does meet the safety requirements that are set up by the national organization. The next two, the historical muse, I did two applications in here. One was a partial project, and then one's for the full project. The partial project was $186,000, and this would include work that was not completed by the $104,000 grant that we already received. That was in program year 21. I did submit this one in case Wayne County was not able to get county commission approval for additional funding to that 21 grant. And that is what they're actually working on doing for us. So they're looking to bump that $104,000 grant up to a $299,000 grant. And, but that does require county commission approval. So they're working on that right now. It looks promising, but I haven't heard anything guaranteed me that information back yet. I did not want to take a chance in the city to lose out on any opportunity for this grant application, so we submitted the partial. Also submitted a full grant application at $354,000. I took the application that we had, or the bid that we'd received, I bumped that up because that was a November bid. Come March, April, May, June, whenever they decide to award, it could be higher when that bid comes in. So I wanted to put enough buffer in there. And again, that's if they decide to rescind the 104, I want to make sure we had this application in. If they're not successful getting that additional, we had, you know, put this in so they can have that for consideration. And recall, this program had changed back in program year 19. I'll be honest with you, I wasn't too fond of the changes. We were able to get about $120,000 a year, and we were able to use that for street improvements and some other projects. Humpty Dumpty Park was one of those projects in the previous time. When they changed the program, they guaranteed us $20,000 per year, which could be used for the public safety activities. And then once every five years, you'd be guaranteed a $100,000 a year project. And so, so far, in addition to the three $20,000 allocations we received, we've also received $135,000 for the elevator at the Plouche Apartments. We've received $183,000 for the ADA improvements at the Kennedy Park, and we received $104,000 for the repairs of the Historical Museum. And that could be growing a little bit more. As we mentioned earlier in the back, last year, we used the $20,000 allocation to put towards the Kennedy Park, plus we had program income. So when people pay off their, they had housing rehab loans from many years ago. When they pay that off, it becomes program income. We've applied that to this project, so that covers, there's no cost for the Kennedy Park project out of the general fund at all. So about a $230,000 project with no general fund. And then working on the historical museum, it could go up to, like I said before, $299,000. So I think as much as I, my displeasure that they changed the program, we've done very well with those changes on top of that, so. Department heads and councilpeople, as I know, are working hard on the articles for the next edition of Allen Park Today. I know that they've contacted Councilman Marcos, Mayor, I know you've been contacted, and the department heads are working diligently on their articles as well, to get those in by the end of the week, early next week. And then just a reminder that the city offices and library will be closed for President's Day on Monday, February 21st.
Thank you. Does anyone have any, yes, sorry, correction. May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report? Motion by Mr. Lally?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Blevins. Anybody have questions or comments?
Yeah, we got a great team of people that work hard to make sure that happens, so. You know, when I first got here, I know Bob's not here, but I know Pat remembers and probably others, we were, I don't want to say criticized, but there was a lot of questions, why aren't we going after grants? Why aren't we getting grants? And talking to Tom, and so, you know, we really have been fairly successful in the grant application. We've, you know, with block grant, but not only there, but with the roads, we've got money for two bridges. So I think, you know, we're trying to do that, I don't even want to get into what Chief LaFond was able to get, and Chief Cannon's following right in those footsteps as well, working hard on those. So, and then we got Pat leading around here for applications on those, plus the grants we received from Wayne County Park Grants. So a lot of activity going on to help relieve that, the general fund for those activities being paid for. That's it. Right now, I'm looking for the contact down in Wayne County for, to request some ARP money. We'll have that here for you, what we plan to do with ours, but I'd like to see if I can get money from Wayne County, get money from the state first. Unfortunately, I hope it keeps coming, but I think there's an end, so.
I will make one comment. If you've never been involved in writing grants, I don't think anyone has any idea the amount of work that's involved. And I'm not going to tell you that I have been involved, because I've avoided that, but I've been around enough people, including the Allen Park Citizen Civic Fund, to know how much time is spent in gathering information, because it's not just a simple one page, I want this amount of money, please send it to me. There are hours and hours and hours that are expended by our department heads, by support personnel. When I've seen people here at seven or eight o'clock at night, because they're working on grants, trying to make a deadline, I think we really need to express our appreciation. I know that's gone on in all the departments. And some of them, again, if I look at Parks and Recreation, the amount of time they spent in gathering information for one of the APCCF grants, it paid off.
Absolutely, yeah.
But you had to put a lot of work and effort into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
It wasn't just, hey, you know, we've got this project, and we can really use $400,000. There was a lot of data that had to be gathered, a lot of wordsmithing, a lot of people worked on that, both internally and externally. And so, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure everyone here, we want to thank all of you who work on these grants, and in particular, you.
I can't do it without the team behind me. They, we have a spectacular team, and I know I've texted them at various hours. I know Tom was on vacation, I'm texting him questions. I know I've done the same with Pat. And I really do appreciate them being able to be responsive back, so I can get everything done. Because eventually, I want to go home and go to bed, too. So, but I do appreciate all their help.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We now come to the public comments section of tonight's agenda. Anyone of the public who is here would like to come up and speak, may do so at this point. All we want is your name and the street on which you live, not your address. Restrict your comments to four minutes, and be nice. No one is coming forward, so I will close the public comments section. We now come to the consent agenda, which consists of purchasing actions, claims and accounts, payroll report, finance actions, which is the January 2022 finance overview, budget to actual report, balance sheet, and cash flow. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Resolutions. First resolution is to approve the request from the fire department for the payment of 10% matching funds to the city of Wyandotte in the amount of $8,101.20 out of the capital fund for 11 MSAS CBA units. And I will stop there, and I will let an expert talk about that. I'm sorry, yes. Can I have a motion? That's Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Chief Cannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Clerk. Thanks for having me up here tonight. Speaking of grants, yes, they are a lot of work, and the follow-up is also tremendous, too, because they always ask you questions on verification. Tonight, we're talking about some SCBAs that Chief LaFond started with in 2020. We're finding that regional grants are easier to get, because the government, both state and federal, likes cost sharing amongst groups. And we like regionalization in the fire department, because we are constantly working with each other at fire scenes, and if you have the same SCBAs, it makes it easier to exchange in a minor emergency, or God forbid, a major emergency, where we can help each other out in breathing while somebody's trapped. This was submitted, the good news is, we received the grant. The bad news is, we only received half of the amount through the region. So the group of chiefs that submitted it chose to vote to accept the grant. In Allen Park Fire's case, our ISI brand SCBAs, which is the self-contained breathing apparatus, are in decent shape. They have not outlived their useful life of what is 15 years, per the NFPA. They're at about nine years now. However, out of the blue, about two years ago, the ISI company decided they are no longer going to manufacture, or service, or produce parts for fire department SCBAs. They're going to continue to work with the military. So while those parts are sitting in warehouses, they are slowly dwindling, and we don't know if and when and how long they're going to last. We approximate maybe four years, or maybe five. But that is a gamble. And you'd be surprised at how often these items need to be maintained. We maintain them in-house. We've sent our, two of our firefighter or paramedics, actually, they're sergeants, to school to learn how to service them. They get banged around a lot under routine use, under training, and especially in a fire where you can't see, and you're running into walls and so forth. And we use them in the rain, and in the snow, and a lot of dirt and soot can get inside them and so forth. So they need servicing, and they do wear out. For your knowledge, the SCBAs are worn by firefighters in any atmosphere that is dangerous to human life, and that includes fire, of course, but it can also include hazardous material incidents, fuel spills, natural gas leaks, and so forth. And what we're asking today is for the Mayor and Council to approve the 10% matching funds. Basically, we would get $81,000 worth of SCBAs for $8,101.20. Any questions?
Will you be able to, if this continues to service, maybe get into a parse that keep around occasionally in the future?
It's a good question. We may be able to do that, but I've, two problems occur. You want all of your SCBAs on all of your apparatus to be the same SCBA. So everything's interchangeable, and if you have two brands there, then you can't grab one, and the mask that's issued to you is your mask, and it won't fit into that other brand. Okay? And there's a chance that on some of our used, we will keep around for training. We will all maybe, if this gets taken care of, and we're able to get the second half of the SCBAs, which I have a grant application out already with a regional partner on that for next year, so we can fulfill the fulfillment of the second half of these. If we receive these, we're going to go ahead and just set them in a caged locker, keep them there, continue to use our ISIs, and look for a grant on the second half. If we're unable to do that, I'm going to ask Amanda and Mark to allow us to put that into our capital plan for the following year. I will note also on good news that Chief LaFond had $250,000 two years from now for all new SCBAs, so that if we're able to do this, we're at least cutting that in half. But if I can pull off Hail Mary on the second half, then we'll be able to eliminate that $250,000 out of the capital plan and use it for something else in the city or fire department. So, but that was a good question, but that's the direction we want to go in with that. And also, I may give some of the used SCBAs to our cadet program, developing for recruitment within our, the plan that you folks helped set up a few months ago. Good?
If there are no other questions, may I have a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution two is to approve the St. Francis Cabrini Annual Festival on June 10, 11, and 12, including closure of Wick Road, no parking on the west side of Lawrence, snow fence down the center of Wick, and the presence of two Allen Park police officers. I have a motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. And we have a guest tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With me is Ms. Tiffany Cogswell. She's the person in charge of getting this portion of the project for the Cabrini Festival together. And we did meet with her back in October. We had a great meeting with myself, police chief, fire chief, deputy fire chief, DPS director, and building director, kind of went over all the concerns that we had from the 21 event, and how we can avoid those for 22. And the main focus that we had were the ones that the mayor just went through. Closure of Wick Road, the no parking on the west side of Lawrence Avenue, the snow fence down the center of the islands, to make sure the foot traffic doesn't destroy the islands, and then presence of two police officers on the Friday and Saturday evening timeframe. And that is what we are making a recommendation to approve this, with the road, the main request was for the road closure, and then we were able to work on the other issues. I'll yield to Ms. Cogswell.
Good evening, everybody. Do you guys have any questions or concerns that I can help or answer with in regards to the motion?
I think it was covered pretty thoroughly in the work session. And it looks like you have all worked on this plan pretty extensively. Yes, you had everybody in the room that needed to be in there, and it looks like you're going to have some talent. So thank you.
As the Chief Cannon mentioned in the pre-meeting session, as well as Matt Baker, they've dealt well, worked well with the Carnival vendor that they're going to be using this year, which is, again, not the same vendor from last year. They've had no issues with that company in the past. Meeting with Tiffany, they have worked with her in the past, being involved with that, with the Carnival's net. I don't have any concern, feel very confident that her and her husband Rory have this thing under control.
Well, she sure does. She does a heck of a job over there.
Thank you, Mr. Lally.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Again, one of those projects that everybody gets to enjoy, and nobody has any idea as to the time and effort and the number of people that are involved in putting it together.
Let me just add, the request for the presence of the officers is also the same request that we've made of the Michigan Festival at the DDA, the Allen Park Street Fair with the Festivities Commission, and then the DDA also for one of their first events at the Music in the Streets at the, be held in the Community Center parking lot. So I don't want to make sure we're not, you know, looking like we're picking on Cabrini for that. We don't, we've not had any issues in the past. Knock on wood, we don't want to have any. We just feel it's important to make sure we have that police presence, so that everybody feels safe.
That's a good public safety requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution three, to authorize the city of Allen Park to submit the application for a recreation passport grant for the removal and replacement of the non-ADA compliant bleachers in the community center arena, for a total cost of the project of $300,000, with funding to be $150,000 from the state grant and $150,000 from the 2022-23 city budget. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Information from Mr. Hawkins.
Well, this is an item that has been in the five-year capital plan. And although it hasn't been funded, it's been listed as a need. And right now, the recreation passport grant with the DNR is the only DNR grant that funds indoor recreation projects. All the others are outdoor recreation. Now, we have not had a lot of success with DNR grants in the last, I'm going to say, seven or eight or nine or 10 years. One reason, they changed the rules, and like, we're going to work on this one, but it's heavily weighted towards your median household income, of which we are above the median household income, so we don't get any of those points. On the other hand, it takes a second look when you make a higher match, and you get additional points when you get a higher match. And so, this is, it's a need, and so we're going to see what they have to say about it.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Just for clarification, in regards to the timeframe with this, like, could you explain, like, we did in a work session?
Oh, well, the DNR grants, DNR grants need to be written, worked on, and submitted at the same time our budgets need to be written, worked on, and submitted. And it seems like everything comes at once. But the application, you have to put, I submitted a notice of application, which was due by February 1st, and then the grant has to be submitted by April 1st. Now, I have asked some people that have helped in the past on the APCCF grants to help me, because I don't have the time to do that. to help me because I don't have the time to do it all. I, uh, as the mayor explained, uh, wha, just one of these grants probably would take me six weeks to just do nothing but that grant. And I don't think any of us department heads have that kind of time. Not complaining, it's just, that's just the way it is. And the DNR grants, uh, so anyway, so the applications go in by April first. They do, they do not announce who gets the grants until, uh, December of the same year or January of the next year. And when, whether it's indoor or outdoor, that generally means you're going to work on that project the next summer or fall, uh, in order to get competitive bids and things like that out. So that's a timeline, so we're basically looking at next year, the following year's budget.
And one other thing that I think I heard as far as the bleachers, it's not just a question of their aging and their, really, not in great shape, but also handicap accessibility is a factor?
Right, those bleachers were, were made, uh, those are forty years old, maybe closer to fifty. I'm, I can't think fast enough, but there was no ADA requirement back then. We've created a ramp and made a few things, but they're still not totally in compliance. Um, and so, yes, especially with the number of seats. ADA requires a certain number of seats based on the number of total seats available. And, um, you know, we don't have, we still don't have that. So, um, uh, with the aging of the wood, the aging of the mechanicals, uh, what it takes to even pull them, pull them out or push them back against the wall, we only try to do it once or twice per year, once out and once back, um, because the electri, the electronics don't work, uh, completely. Yeah, it's not in ADA compliance, but anything that's changed or moved or, or worked on would have to become that way.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. And resolution four is to authorize the city to submit the application for a Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for the removal and installation of a new inclusive playground at Cunningham Park. Total cost of five-hundred thousand. Funding would be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the state grant and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three city budget. May I have a motion?
Motion, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Support.
Second by Mr. Marcos. I, I had left and right, so I think I heard the right first, thank you. And, uh, another explanation.
This playground is something that we've been working, working on putting together. It was submitted under a previous grant, uh, a number of years ago. But the requirements and the median household income and all the things worked against us. And, and, and that's when I, it was, who received grants that year that I realized that the state gets its own grants for the state parks and things like that, who have big employ, big pools of employees who have nothing else to do but work on these grants. And the communities, the communities find it difficult unless they have a large pool of employees that, that can do this. So I asked for some help on this as well. And then I spoke to, uh, Grant, one of the, our Grant person at the state who suggested this one because of the inclusivity, uh, inclusivity meaning children, young adults, people of all abilities, whether they be, uh, physically, uh, handicapped, mentally handicapped, no, uh, no handicap that you know us, know of. But this kind of playground can put everybody, including a person on a wheelchair, up to the level other than just the ground. And if they have cognitive inabilities, there are music sounds on the, on the unit. It, it's a unit that's really made for all abilities. And, um, so that's the basic unit. Uh, I was convinced to go after the land and water grant because it's the only one that only has the household income as one stage instead of the other ones having four different stages where you don't, I wouldn't get points. This is only one. At the same time, it requires a fif, it requires a fifty percent match. And so they have fewer applicants. And, um, uh, with the need, the design and what it's for, the, the inclusivity will help with the point scoring and, and, and help with everything. I, I think this is one we have a decent shot at. And, uh, so can I, I guess I'd rather answer questions if I can.
Does anyone have any questions? I do, because I'd like to just, how many parks do we have in the city?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. And we have been trying to, in layman's terms, switch out equipment and the surfaces.
Yes.
For quite some time. How many of those nineteen have we managed to do? Because there's a cost, I mean.
There is a cost and, um, when I came here, I, I started and used heavily the Wayne County Grants, the Wayne, from the Wayne County Parks Village, of which the purpose is for a capital improvement in the parks. And, uh, so we have used that exclusively towards improving the parks. Now, it's not, it, it's just the way it is. Most of our park equipment was forty and fifty years old when I've got, when I got here. And, uh, we still have, I think it's six parks to still renovate out of the nineteen. But all of the county money has basically gone, fro, from the Parks Village, has gone to improve and replace, uh, and renovate the parks.
And I, I, you know, I wanted to point that out to individuals and I'm quite surprised. I've been involved in a couple of the, the builds. Um, and when you're telling me that we've got nineteen, there's only six that require this updating. I think that's, uh, something that we should be very, very proud of in this community. Um, the fact that we are doing what we are doing in our parks. And again, um, people look at some of the numbers and it's quite unbelievable. You think, oh, park equipment, but the, the equipment that goes in the park playgrounds is not the equipment that you go to Lowe's or Home Depot and put in your backyard. Uh, and this equipment's going to last a long time. And, uh, the accessibility for those with disabilities is incredible. The fact that we're looking at some of those communications boards, again, for, for, uh, conversations.
Yes, there will be a new one that goes up in Millward. It's already in, uh, the Rotary Purchase that. They've also applied for one for, um, another one, um, I can't recall where.
They are, they put, they're putting one on the Duda Park, correct?
There's one already up there in Duda Park. And, um, uh, it, it's, it, it's a good program, but we don't need it in every park. So I went to the schools and asked them, tell me where, you know, I don't want to know personal information. I just want to know which parks need them based on the residents that attend the schools, um, that, that would be in need of something like that. And so they sent me the park list.
And for anyone who's, excuse me, catching Gary's. For anyone who's not, uh, familiar with that, communications boards are, uh, boards that are set up at a level that can be reached by young children, people on wheelchairs and allows them to communicate by using symbols, um, universal symbols.
Started because of non-verbal, uh, children that were non-verbal and, uh, that was their way to communicate. And that board pretty much has everything.
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we come to reading of, third reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance number zero-one dash twenty-twenty-two. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Are any, uh, discussion or questions? Mr. Coeur?
Do we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ask for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
The, uh, third reading of proposed ordinance oh-one dash two-zero-two-two. An ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances amending Chapter forty-eight Utilities, Article four, Stormwater and Wastewater Collection and Treatment by the repeal and re-adoption of Division four, Design and Construction Requirements for Stormwater Facilities to update the division. And I'll step aside for the public hearing.
I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number zero-one dash twenty-twenty-two. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this ordinance may do so at this time. And as I do not see anyone approaching, we will close the public hearing and move on to the adoption of ordinance number zero-one dash twenty-twenty-two. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. We take a roll call vote.
I have a, uh, motion by Councilman Valerius, supported by Councilman Marcos, to, uh, adopt ordinance number one dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances amending Chapter forty-eight Utilities, Article four, Stormwater and Wastewater Collection and Treatment by the repeal and re-adoption of Division four, Design and Construction Requirements for Stormwater Facilities to update the division. Shall this ordinance pass? Councilman Blom?
Yes.
Pro Tem Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McCloud?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
And Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
The yeses have it, the ordinance will be, uh, published and adopted as prescribed by law.
Thank you. And now we move on to, uh, council closing comments. And tonight we'll start with, uh, Mr. Valerius.
All right. First, uh, thank you all the department heads and, uh, everyone for being here and for engaging in the conversation we had at the work session and, uh, all the information supplied us today regarding the resolutions. Keep it short and sweet. Uh, I was honored to represent Allen Park, uh, after our last city council meeting because Mayor McLeod asked me very nicely, considering she knew I was going up to the Maple Heights Senior Living Retirement Community to take a large box of N-ninety-five base masks that were, uh, put together by Wayne County Commissioner Sam Baydune. And, uh, so my dad's a resident of Maple Heights Community, or the Maple Heights Community, so I was going to visit him anyway, so it worked out for me to be able to drop him off. And, uh, I actually didn't go that evening, but I went the next day and I happened to go up there right at lunchtime, so all the residents were in the lunchroom. And the director Lori Batz met me there and she was extremely happy and very appreciative, uh, when the big box arrived. And all these, uh, N-ninety-five masks were two in a packet and they had a big sticker, Sam Baydune sticker.
Nice.
So a little bit of, uh, push for Wayne County Commissioner Sam Baydune. Uh, they did ask, uh, that I stick around for a photo op, which I'm not going to refuse the opportunity. So, uh, I actually, uh, went, went to my dad's table where he was sitting with all his, uh, friends waiting on their lunch and they all held their mask up and they, uh, took a nice, uh, picture. And I guess the, the main thing with all of that and the whole story was, as I was leaving and walking away from the table, I could hear, like, all the residents that were sitting around my dad asking them, hey, you know, who's that? And, uh, I, I was almost halfway out, but I heard my dad and, uh, I smiled. My heart kind of filled because, uh, his answer was, that's my son. He's a city councilman. So it kind of hit me, so, but, uh, I appreciated that opportunity to do that and, and represent not only the city, uh, but also just how appreciative they all were, uh, to get those, 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 uh, masks and, uh, continue to practice, uh, safety that we all need to continue practicing as well. In light of the numbers continuing to decline, uh, we still have to do our due diligence and, and remain safe. So, and, uh, thank you for that opportunity, Mayor. And, uh, with that, I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I want to thank the Allen Park Police Department for getting involved with that snow race. I was getting involved, it was a great opportunity for our department and shows what the community can get together and can really make something happen, things can happen quick. Definitely want to thank DPS for all their hard work during Snowmageddon. That wasn't too snowy as I thought it would be. I think our Councilman Valerius was disappointed. But I also want to thank him as he used his snowplows, he went up and down the street and, uh, did a great job, saved my back.
Remember what you said to me?
Oh. And with that, uh, I look forward to the Cabrini Street Fair, not, not Street Fair, Cabrini Festival. And I know that Ms. Cogswell is going to do fantastic job organizing that event and making sure it's compliant. And as theme of tonight, everyone talked about Grant already. And I have not taken part myself personally, but I have been offered to do that myself. And, uh, with all the effort that can be involved, I, I do know that it takes hard work. So I thank everyone that has taken part in those processes and to keep on getting money, monies for our city and to do great things because, as I keep on saying, when the community gets together and you do these things for it, it really shows up and it pays off in a big way, not only financially, but the joy you see on children's faces when they go to the playground for the first time or any other, even when we get grants for roads, like, go down a road and not have to just hear someone say, oh, man, there's a pothole here. Well, with that being said, I belong with it. Happy Valentine's Day to my beautiful wife on the fourteenth and, uh, before we meet again is President's Day. And I would like to take that day to kind of reflect on our history, good and bad. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins?
Well, last few meetings, we kept on saying, you know, residents, please come, speak to us and all stuff, well, let's do some reverse psychiatry where, don't come, please, do not. Then maybe, just maybe, they might show up because, well, I'm going to prove Councilman Blom's wrong and speak up there and all that stuff, so. But, um, first off, uh, again, uh, thank you to our, uh, DPS with the snow removal. I know, you know, sixteen, that was not sixteen inches of snow, which I'm kind of happy with. It's working midnights now, so it's all good. Um, to any resident that talks about roads, potholes and stuff like that, most times I usually, when I see it, it's usually Wayne County roads. And I've said in the past where the more people that report to one-eight-eight, one-eight-eight road crew to Wayne County about certain areas and roads or traffic lights, or if they want a turn signal or anything like that, that's Wayne County, call that number. And then the more people that do that, it might get done. And so, um, we were talking about the sledding in Woodhaven and I know they were talking about possibly maybe want to do on the hill down Outer Drive. Today I actually went up there and there's a lovely pothole on Outer Drive right when you get up there. So I did call about that. So, um, again, communication and the more that people, um, come together, help one another, it makes a strong community. Uh, but just want to keep it short and sweet and I, again, sweet, happy Valentine's Day to everyone. And I just keep staying optimistic and, you know, we're going to get, have a wonderful new year. And with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Dennis? Marcos?
Um, I do want to thank all of the department heads for all their hard work of getting these. And, and Pat, I know how hard these grants are. Everybody in the departments, these grants are nearly impossible. It takes, and I, I'm familiar with them. I have someone in my house who works and does these, so I know what it takes and the time is greatly appreciated, the hard work is greatly appreciated. Uh, your love for your work is greatly appreciated. Um, thanks for the DPW, uh, over the weekend, great job. Cleared really fast, the streets did, did a great job for us. But I wanted to thank the department heads more than anything, because I know they, they run the show for their guys and they, they command a lot of respect from their people, obviously, because they do such a great job. So I want to thank all you guys. And closing my message as usual, please come. We're, we're up here, people are working hard, they're, uh, passing ordinances and bills. Uh, we're not getting any input from anybody and we really could use it. So I'm- message is, is the same, and it will be every week, every other week that we're here, uh, please come to our meetings, please, help us, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lally?
Yes, I wanna repeat exactly what Marcos says and Blevins and Matthew and everybody up here. We have to have people here to talk to and then ask questions, yeah, and you get phone calls saying, what about this and what about that? I said, you know, the council meeting is two times a month, you could come to the council meeting, even on the work session, and we could discuss your problem. And we will handle it, you know? I guess if nobody comes, I guess that was the problem should solve, so we don't have to do too much of anything. So I just wanna really thank, and I'm gonna repeat this again, for the DPS department, what they did in the streets this, this year, and this, uh, little bit of snow we had, but I tell you what, that was clean, that was beautiful. I wish when Matthew would come over to my house and do my snow, but he don't wanna do it. Other than that, I wanna thank the police department for doing, doing that idea about sledding, that's great, you could make money off and, and take care of people. And Benkerton, they really needed, uh, the, the money for the, the, uh, the blank. Very nice. And other than that, I wish would come to the, people would come to the meeting and, uh, check, check us out, maybe we're doing a mistake or something, I don't know. We don't know until you'll come, thank you. And good night, and good night, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd?
Ditto. But in seriousness, everybody already, uh, hit on everything, but I, I just wanna say, um, I think that, uh, Mr. Kovier's invocation kinda hit, hit the nail on the head and kinda captures the spirit of what everybody said here. And, and it's really an amazing thing, um, that when, when you serve your community, like many of our department heads, um, are, all of our department heads do, they serve this community, all of our, our workers, our DPW moving all that snow, um, I saw them, I believe on Belmont today fixing a water main, I'm not sure if it, if it was, yep, it was, okay? Um, we're, working out in the frigid cold, um, doing that work, our, our police and our fire putting themselves in, um, in harm's way. And, and to all, all of you, um, our elected officials, um, including, um, our city clerk, Mr. Mizzi, who works tirelessly to make sure that the, uh, the wheels of government, um, are working, and, and Ms. Armstrong, who is making sure that we are, are treasured, making sure that, um, our finances, everything i- is going the way that it's supposed to be. Um, I'm, I'm deeply appreciative to everybody here that is, uh, making this city what it is. And, and I, I share everybody's frustration, um, but I think, uh, uh, Mr. Kibbe said it last week, when, when the people aren't here, you're doing something right. Um, and, and I, and I agree, we, you, you need to be involved in democracy, you need to let people know, um, when, when, what, what you, you need. But, um, I, I, I think that it, it speaks to the job that everybody up here and everybody in the audience is doing, um, that we are not seeing, uh, more people in these audiences. So I, I am very appreciative to everybody up here and everybody out there, so thank you so much, I appreciate it, and I yield.
Thank you. And I'd like to give Mr. Mizzi an opportunity.
Just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, God bless you, good night.
Okay, well, I'm probably gonna be the most long-winded tonight because you, uh, fellas missed a, a number of things. But I'll try not to drag it out. We covered Valentine's Day, we got Super Bowl Sunday coming up. The DPS, uh, uh, I think I have a email in my inbox that I need to forward, I forgot to do that, and I will. Fire and police, uh, we know that they go through many, many things. It crossed my mind the other day that, um, with everything that, the discussions that are being held about mental health, that we need to keep that in mind for all of our public service workers, fire, police, um, and eve- and, and the DPS, uh, some of the conditions under which they work, some of the things that our fire and policemen observe other than just traffic stops, some of the things they have to deal with can be very, very emotional. So, um, I think when you are dealing with any of our officers or, uh, uh, safety personnel, keep that in mind that they are human beings with feelings and emotions and psyches that we need to be aware of. That snow sledding was wonderful, um, I had thoughts of going home and changing my clothes, but after talking to Mr. Kibbe, I was glad that I avoided that. But majorly what I wanna talk today and what we've kinda overlooked is that the month of February is Black History Month. And it was, uh, selected as Black History Month because apparently, um, there was meaning behind it. Birthdays of President Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass are in February. In 1976, President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month and urged, quote, "Fellow citizens to join me in tribute to Black History Month and to the message of courage and perseverance it brings to all of us." And since 1976, every president has designated February as Black History Month. Forty years after, President Barack Obama delivered this message in part. "Black History Month shouldn't be treated as though it is somehow separate from our collective American history, or somehow just boiled down to a compilation of greatest hits from the March on Washington or from some of our sports heroes. It's about the lived, shared experience of all African Americans." And I guess what drove me to do this is reading today's Free Press. There is a section on the inside page that's called "Today in History." And just so we understand that we are not as far removed from the past as we think we are, today in history on February eighth, nineteen sixty-eight, three black students were killed in a confrontation between demonstrators and highway patrolmen at South Carolina State University in Orangeburg amid protests over a whites-only bowling alley. And I would like you to let that sink in. Please explore, read, and learn. Understand that not everyone, regardless of how we want to perceive ourselves, is or has been treated equally or has been given the same opportunities. Actions speak louder than words. May I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Lally, supported by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at six fifty, seven PM. Thank you all and stay warm.